Good morning. I called order the April 2nd, 2019, meeting of the Salina County Board of Commissioners. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Shadwick.
Here.
Commissioner Sparks.
Here.
Commissioner Vidrickson.
Here.
Commissioner Wees.
Here.
Commissioner White.
Here. I ask you please stand and join me in a flag salute followed by a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We now move to the public forum where citizens may speak on county government, usually limited to three minutes, items that are not on today's agenda. Does anyone wish to address the commission?
Karen Shade Salina. Last Wednesday, I listened to Friendly Fire and Director Manley and Hannah Stanbaugh were on, and I just wanted to say, I think it was a really wise decision to move Hannah into the deputy director's role. Her ability to bring consensus among different people is one of her many positive traits, and so I think that I wanted to commend you for that. The other thing that kind of happened that I didn't fully understand, someone made a statement about how Salina had among the worst or was part of the meth capital of Kansas. Sometimes they get to talking and it's hard to tell where it came from. My one observation is I tried Googling it to see if I could find anything to that effect, and I couldn't. But with media interviews, if something incorrect is said, it's really important to stop them in the gates and correct that. I would suggest, though, that with the focus on reducing the jail population, there has to be a huge component about helping people not get started with drugs in the first place. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I think that statement did come from a caller that called into...
I've listened to a lot of statements made from this commission and previous commissions. One commissioner made the comment, "What happened to Robert's rules? Do you ever go back and review your code of conduct, what you're supposed to be responsible for to the people? There's other cities that are doing this, so maybe you can learn from them." And I've heard the discussion, "Home rule." What does that entail? Are you going to give us more information, what you're going to be allowed to do, or you're taking liberties with doing? Thanks.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention. Does anyone else wish to speak? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission for regular business. Item number one.
Approve agenda for public forum as presented.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the agenda for the public forum as presented.
Second the motion.
It's been moved, the second that we approve today's agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, motion carries. Item number two.
Approval of county commission minutes for March 26, 2019.
Mr. Chairman, I move we accept the county commission minutes of March 26, 2019 as presented.
Second the motion.
Are there any additions or deletions, corrections? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, motion carries. Item number three.
Week of the Young Child proclamation with Angela Hagan, childcare surveyor with the Health Department.
Morning, Angela.
Good morning. I'm Angela Hagan, and I'm a board member of the Kansas Association for the Education of Young Children. I'm also the president of the Salina Chapter of Kansas Association for the Education of Young Children. Our purpose is to improve professional practice and working conditions in the field of early childhood education, and we build public understanding and support through public initiatives and public awareness. We bring to you the proclamation for the Week of the Young Child, whereas the Salina Chapter of KSAYC, Kansas Association for the Education of Young Children, in conjunction with the National Association for the Education of Young Children, are celebrating the Week of the Young Child, April 8 through the 12th of 2019. Whereas these organizations are working to promote and inspire high-quality early child experiences for our state's youngest citizens that can provide a foundation of learning and success for children in Salina, Kansas. Whereas teachers and others who work with or on behalf of young children, birth through age eight, who make a difference in the lives of young children in Salina deserve thanks and recognition. Whereas public policies that support early learning for all young children are crucial to young children's futures and to the prosperity of our society. Now, therefore, the Salina, the Salina County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim April 8 through the 12th, 2019, the Week of the Young Child in Salina, and encourage all citizens to work to support and invest in early childhood. We thank you for your support.
Thank you. Do you have any other activities planned for your...
Yes, I actually brought you guys flyers. Next week, we have an event every single day.
Oh, good. Great.
Let me bring those to you.
You may.
Mr. Chairman, while she's doing that, I move we declare April 8 through the 12th, 2019, as the Week of the Young Child.
Second.
It's been moved, and second that we declare the Week of April 8 through 12th as the Week of the Young Child. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign, motion does carry. Angela, thank you very much for your work in this area. It's very important to society, I know. Also, I have a signed proclamation that I will present to you if you wish to come forward.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Angela, in your statements here, and I just, quick question, is, do you serve in Salina County, or is this just for Salina? I mean...
The Week of the Young Child?
Yes.
It's a national event. So we're in every county, every state.
Oh, okay. Because we was just pretty much here as Salina, and I didn't know if that, if people out of Salina, Salina County, they could come and get help, or, you know, training and help their children.
Yeah, anybody come. We serve three counties, and McPherson's doing their own events, and anybody can, this is open to everybody.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you again.
Thanks.
Now move to item number four.
Road and Bridge update with Darren Fischel, Road and Bridge Superintendent.
Morning, Darren.
Good morning. This is our quarterly report for the Maintenance Division for our, you know, we did a lot of things. We had bid awards for motor graders, mower decks, trucks and pickups. We're also starting to repair the mower decks we have. This is a picture of one of the dump trucks that the commission awarded that just arrived Wednesday. We getting in the shop, putting the decals and the radios on and making it serviceable for us. We did start the 2020 budget preparation, as you are aware. I got the paperwork for that, so we'll be working on that. Just a little note on our training room for the new facility that the commissioners allowed us to build. In that facility, we had a training room, and the purpose of that was to allow training for our, not only our employees, but a regional place for LTAP and those places to come to cut down the cost for people to train employees. We had a K-Work Flagger Training Class. We did have the lunch with legislatures out at our facility, a regional commissioners meeting, an LTAP culvert management class, and LTAP culverts and drainage class. And in addition to that, that we didn't have at our facility, we sent 16 employees to seven different training classes. And then we're preparing for the spring projects. Our rural operators have been trimming trees, repairing the springs that have been showed up, showing up in the roadways due to the wet conditions, and the most important one, now that the weather's allowing, to get out and start maintaining the roads and reshaping and getting the crown back in them. The Maintenance Division, we did trash pickups, tree removal. We did have eight snow and ice events between January and March, and those, every snow event requires almost a week. By the time you go out, you get ready for it, and go out and do it, and then clean the vehicles, that shoots three or four days. The snow cover did allow burning of some old tree piles that we had had throughout the county, so we were able to get some of those done. The culvert work was kind of light because the ground was frozen, but we did have this box on Armstrong, box culvert on Armstrong collapse, and the commission did approve for that to be replaced under the 2018 RCB package, and I think that project is almost complete. I think, as I was out there the other day, I think they just got to do some dirt work and put the aggregate on that. In 2018, the commission approved a cutter head for an excavator. This is some of the work that we were able to do with that. This is a, an hedge road along Simpson Road. This normally would have taken a week or better for us to side lash that, stack it, and then go back and burn it later, but in three or four days, we were able to do this. And once we're done, we're done. You know, nobody has to go back and do it. So it's really cut down on man hours. They did this in three days. So that really has been a plus for us, and we did that in multiple locations throughout the county. We hauled aggregates for work tasks consisting of about 1,600 ton of asphalt plant waste, 14,475 tons of crushed rock, 1,000 ton of AB3, about 1,400 ton of sand, and 1,700 ton of road salt. But the road salt in there because that's, we typically don't report that, but because we did have all those events, that is what we use, just so you get an idea of how much salt we've gone through this winter.
Is that all gone?
No. We have used it all. We have about 300 ton left in our salt barn, and we're hoping not to need anymore, so that'll give us the summer to fill it up.
For sure.
Work that we have coming up and things to do for the spring is, we've still got about 10,000 ton of aggregate requests to get accomplished, which is hauling material to the roads. We're going to put an asphalt millings edge wedge on Shipton Road. This is a road we paved last year that has a drop off. There's some millings on Marymount Road, short haul, that we're going to purchase to do that with, saving some fuel because the haul is closer. We're going to place an earth edge wedge on Brookville Road going north of I-70 to the county line. This was overlaid several years ago. There was a gentleman out there that dug upon. We were able to get that dirt very reasonable and stack it up here at Eagles Knob, and this is what we did during harvest last year to stay off the road, is we hauled this dirt to Eagles Knob, so we didn't have to close the road. We're going to take that and put a foot or two edge wedge to kind of correct the drop And then, once that's complete, hopefully within this timeframe, we're going to upgrade this section of Link Road, which is earth, serves about five or six residents. North of Watkins Road, we're going to do about 6,000 feet of it. One of the, part of the timing in on this is to do the earth edge wedge first, so the trucks going up there can take a load of rock, and we can stockpile it for this project. That way, we don't have to waste fuel hauling just rock and have an empty trucks go up there in the morning. This is an entrance box that was hit on Cloud Street this fall. We're going to build a Lego block entrance culvert for that, and it will look something like this. This is something our department builds for a relatively low cost. I believe, maybe a year or so ago, I asked the commissioners to purchase some galvanized beams off of Purple Wave, and this is what we will use them for, structures like this. We're going to place an earth edge wedge on Don Meyer Road from the River Bridge to Old 40 that was overlaid last year, and we got about 50 culverts to replace from the spring. Every spring, with the heave and the freeze thaw of the ground, if there's any weakness in these structures, this is when they give up, and they start noticing. This is just one of them. The motor grader went over this, and it had been weak, but the operator felt it, and it collapsed as he went over it with his equipment. And this is just a picture that shows some of the things that we deal with because of the spring, and did the culvert bids we did a few weeks ago. This is so we have culverts in our inventory that when these things happen, we can go out and replace them right away or as quickly as possible. To get a culvert in order once, about three weeks, so this is why we have a culvert inventory. And then we've got some ditch cleaning on Kingman Road that we've got projected, some ditch cleaning and repair on Simpson Road, south of I-70. And our traffic control maintained about a little over 3,000 signs in the county. They placed road closure barricades on many places of the roads that we had issues this spring with the springs. With the wet year, we had springs show up in the middle of the roads that had never had any there before, so we had to close them for a time to repair them. And they have also completed their 2019 annual sign inspection and their 2019 regulatory warning sign replacement.
Thank you. Normally, I would wait to the end to make the announcement, but I want everyone to know that Commissioner Wees, and not that I want them to know that we were there, but the Road and Bridge had a safety meeting yesterday morning, and they were awarded a nice, an award for two years continuous of work safety with non-work-related accidents that cost them off the job time. So that's pretty amazing, because you're not talking about people that are sitting behind a desk out there. They're running heavy equipment that can cost a person's life, let alone injury or maiming that can happen, so it's quite an award, and it's a tribute to the staff and the workers out there, that they'd have that kind of a record with them, so. Further comments from commissioners regarding Darren's report? Questions?
No, I just want to comment on the mulcher, on the tree mulcher, because, yeah, it's all over the county where you guys have done a lot of work this year on that. I mean, over the, I mean, a lot of, a lot of areas, yeah, so...
It's been a very effective tool.
Yeah, it looks like it. Good deal. Good job.
All right, thank you for a comprehensive report, Darren. We'll move on to item number five.
Senior Services Update with Rosie Walter, Director of Department of Senior Services.
Good morning, Rosie.
Good morning, Senator. The Advisory Council met on January 25th.
Is your microphone on?
Can you hear me?
There's a little button down at the bottom.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. All right, the Advisory Council met on January 25th. Our next meeting is this month, on the 26th. During that meeting, we discussed the stats, fiscal update, grants, and pending contracts. Down below, you're going to see our stats, how many people come into the building and the different types of ways they come, maybe the dining room, or subsidized Meals on Wheels, or Adult Day Sunflower. So our numbers for the month of February, I don't have March in there yet, are 318. But if you look up above, for February, it was 314, so we're right in line where we were last year. Right now, we're actively writing a grant for Dane Hanson Foundation and Sunderland Foundations to work on the roof, the dirt work, pointing of the building, windows, heating and cooling, bathrooms, kitchen, and drive-through. So right now, I've got a good part of it written, but I'm waiting on some quotes, so as soon as I have that done, I plan on getting that submitted. And Andrew's been helping me with that, too, and Hannah. Okay, right now, the contracts that I have pending are the North Central Flint Hills Area Agency on Aging, the lease. We have gotten commission approval. I have sent that off to North Central, so as soon as I have that signed, I will come back before you and get commission approval. The Aladdin contract, which is the food contract, also was just county council approved, so I just did the RFA, so I'm hoping that I can get in front of you maybe next week on that. Match Madness for 2019. The numbers are a little off because we had additional dollars that came in, so we're at 5,910 and 64 cents, 4,311 and 60 for Meals on Wheels, and 1,005904 for just senior services. This is a little bit lower than last year, so I think that one of my big donors was not there, so that's part of it, but I think also just the location that we were, I didn't have as much traffic walking by me. If you go back and you look at 2018, we raised 7,397 and 66, but if you look at the year prior, under the Commission on Aging for 2017, they raised 1,837 and 50 cents, so with that, we are doing really good. And then I do want to give a shout out to Andrew, who made eight points, basketballs, so $80 for us, and then Justin Mater made six. Thank you.
Certainly better than the guy you had doing it last year.
I don't know what you're talking about. You did good. So with all that, we did raise 5,910 and 64. Okay, so this year, I got a phone call from Kansas Wesleyan, and they asked if their students could come in and participate for completing their community service hours. So the girls' basketball team has been coming in, and the football team. So they're working in the dining room, helping out seniors, so win-win. Seniors love that, if you can just spend a few minutes, but with somebody young like that. Then USD 305 have asked that we allow them to bring in their kids for a job shadowing program. So twice a week, I have high schoolers that are coming out and helping out in the dining room as well. Okay, we are gearing up for our first-ever health fair. So on May 17th, I'm going to have a health fair. Right now, we've already booked 17 of the 52 spots that I have available. The article just came out in 260 last week, so I think that's pretty good. Hopefully, we'll get every spot booked, and then, who knows, I mean, we can just, from year to year, see how it goes. Right now, I'm only giving them half of an eight-foot table, so some of the vendors have actually requested a whole table, so I'm pretty happy. Okay, Senior Services was approached by Brent Campbell. He's a student at Fort Hayes, and he's doing a project on recycling. So Brent came in and asked if we would consider recycling for the senior center, so we have done that for about a month now, but just in that month's time, our trash has greatly diminished. I mean, we put out a lot of cardboard, a lot of tin cans out of the kitchen, so I think if it continues like this, then we will see that we could stop one of our two weekly halls that we have for our trash pickup, so, yeah, impressive. Volunteer Appreciation is coming up, so we have it on this month, April 26th, and again, I'm going to beg for help from the county commissioners. So if you could come and help me, that means the world to all of our volunteers and our seniors, so I would welcome you if you can. It's just a night where I'm planning, I'm pretty much doing the same thing we did last year. It worked out really good with the fried chicken, so very busy night. I'm expecting, you know, right now, our volunteers have increased because our demand has increased, so probably 200-plus participants that night.
I'm sure that you can always use volunteers on your Meals on Wheels, delivery people and so forth.
I do.
But how is your reserves, or are you ever short-staffed in that regard, or is there ever a time when you don't have enough to do that day's deliveries?
Every day. Every day. We have a sub list that helps us greatly, but if we don't, if we can't find a sub on short notice like that, staff goes out and delivers meals. I've gone out and delivered meals. We all have, so.
Yeah, I'm going to give a...
And our routes are huge.
I'm going to give a holler to the community that if anyone watching has any extra time to volunteer to do this, it takes about, what, an hour, Rosie?
Yeah, depending on the route. Some of our routes are gotten awful big, so we're going to have to split them, but yes, typically an hour.
And it's really helpful to the shut-ins and the people that are unable to get out and get meals, and they really appreciate it, so.
Thank you.
All right, questions or comments from the commissioners? Hearing none, thank you for the update, and we wish you well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rosie.
Thank you.
We'll move on to item number six.
Central Kansas Mental Health Center 2020 Budget Request with Kathy Mosier, Executive Director of Central Kansas Mental Health Center.
Good morning, Kathy.
Good morning. First, I want to thank you for designating us as the local mental health authority for Salina County for over 50 years, and we are very committed to making sure that every dollar you have invested in us is well worth your money and then some. I am going to start today, you have packets up there, and we'll start with the annual report to let you know what we've been up to this year, and then we'll go into the budget presentation, and I can talk about the jail a little bit if we have time as well. A couple initiatives that we have taken on in 2018. First and foremost is the significant rise in suicide and depression. So that is a national issue, but in Kansas, we're one of the high states with a 45% increase at the last time the CDC measured. We want to dispel any notion that talking about it causes more... to dispel any notion that talking about it causes more risk or people to think about it when maybe they hadn't. That has proven not to be the case. So talking about suicide saves lives. So we have taken on a multi-pronged approach to addressing this in our, in our, in our county. And we do serve five counties. And so this report's going to kind of cover all of it. And then we'll go specifically into Saline County. So one of the things we did was we researched and found an evidence-based practice to see is there anything more we could be doing, a better evidence-based practice out there. We found the assist program, which is one of the most nationally and internationally recognized, evidence-based, in other words, proven to get results practices. And one of the things we liked about that is rather it being a medical approach, it is a community approach to say, you know, this is out there. People are talking more to their peers about it than they are reaching out to professionals about it. So it takes a community approach to, to address it. We have invested in assist trainers, which is a Applied Suicide Intervention Skills and Training. It's a two-day class. And we are now getting that out as far and wide as possible. This two-day course is for anyone. It can be for the public. It can be, it's, it's very helpful for professionals. We have, we have had classes for parents and community clergy. We have had classes for teachers and school administrators. And we have, now we're very pleased that we've broken into the primary care sector. And the way we did that was we partnered with the KU School of Nursing. And we offered, and they, they actually were able to get a grant to fund that and offer that to all the APRNs, nurse practitioners, and supporting nurse staff for primary care facilities and, and agents, or not agencies, but the primary care sector. That went so well that now they're doing that across the state with assist. And we help when we need to. But our other sister CMHCs, Community Mental Health Centers, have also taken on some trainers. And so they help with that too. The next thing we've done is we doubled the amount of classes that we provided with mental health first aid. And provided from four from the year before to 10 classes this year. We offer depression and anxiety. We call them screenings, but they're really just surveys. They're self, self-surveys you can take to kind of see where you're at. And to let you know if maybe it would be helpful to see a professional. The second big initiative that we took on was that what we know about suicide is that by the time they, somebody attempts their first suicide, 70% of them have not reached out for help. They have not reached out to a parent, a professional, or, or counseling services. And so we were like, we're available. We have walk-in services. We have appointments. You can see a licensed therapist. What are we missing? So our initiative was to take our services out into the community further and bigger than ever. It's a little more expensive, but we want to, we want to make sure that all community folks have access. So we went into the school districts. We partnered with our school districts and anyone who had interest, we are working with them to develop onsite therapists and our other services. So the one thing with a community mental health center, there's therapy, but then there's all kinds of skill-building groups that we'll talk about. So we increased the amount of schools we were in by 60% last year. Of the schools who collected data for that, this is what's remarkable to me. In the first, in the, we started recording in August and through December. In the first semester of the, of the kids we were seeing and the students we were seeing in the schools, it improved their attendance by 83%. A lot of kids who are having appointments, they leave and they don't come back for the entire day. Here, they get in and they get right back to class. The next thing that we found, and, and this is not us measuring this data, this is the schools measuring how we're doing with the data. So they measure academic performance. 76% improvement in academic performance. This, we just got this information and we're really excited about it. Improved behavior, 94%. Now, how do you measure that? It's not them just judging whether they see improved behavior. They're actually using a SABERS, which is a standardized tool for recording and measuring behavior improvement. Our skill-building groups, some students, what we do if a school is interested or a school district is interested in our help, then what we do is we talk with the administrators. And then we go into each building and we do a needs assessment. So if they already have certain resources and have strengths in some areas, we don't want to duplicate. We don't want to waste any dollars. So we see what they have. We see what their needs are. And then we try to fill in. One example is an elementary school here in Salina said, we've got a group of kids that come from very chaotic homes. And every week, they are our highest disciplinary referral kids. What can we do? So what we did was we developed a skill-building group that will help them, that works with them first thing when they come to school. And it's about a 35, 40-minute group. And what they do is they work on skills that help them self-regulate their own emotions and be in control. Then we send them off to class. And that has greatly reduced the amount of behavioral write-ups they have, to the extent that now we have other schools saying, we want what they're getting. So now we have to find staff. But we have more people on our list who are interested in having us come on board. Therapeutic program. So there has not been a therapeutic preschool in this area. Another way to hit the suicide rate or prevention is to, we have, what we're hearing about from teachers is that it's not the older kids that are the most aggressive and violent that we're the most concerned about. It's the kindergartners. They're coming in, they're pulling hair, they're scratching, they're biting, they're drawing blood. They're not ready for kindergarten. So we partnered with Heartland and USD 305 and the Special Ed Co-op to say, none of us have any money for this, but how do we, how do we figure out a program where we can blend our funding so that we can do this very cost-effectively and provide a need? And so what we did, so we did that. And we opened in September. We started with two kids and it grew to four. We have an eight-kid max at the moment with the staff that we have. And we already have one child who we were trying to prepare for kindergarten, but is doing so well that this youth is transitioning back to regular preschool. Now, the kids that are identified and that get into this program are kids who either have been kicked out of preschool or kicked out of multiple daycare centers. So that's a pretty big success. The other part of that program, I'll mention, has a very strong family component, where the skills that we're teaching in the classroom, also, we are transitioning those skills into the home with the families. Our Martin Youth Center is a youth crisis center for kids. It's considered outpatient, but it, they can stay there up to three days. It gives breaks to families and kids. It, it helps us to have time to work with them on whatever, whatever's causing the, the crisis in the home. And it prevents hospitalizations. And it prevents families from being split apart or foster care, things like that. We provided 31% more hours. We served fit, we were able to staff it up further so that we had, because of the need, that we served 50 more youth this year than last. We also have a suspension program component to that, which means that if someone is suspended from school, those hours that they would normally be in school, they're able to come to our program. We work with them one-on-one and will help them to examine and explore what it was they got suspended for and, and support them in a way that they have services or they have supports in place where they understand and have a prevention plan from getting suspended again. Plus, we keep them up on their homework so they're not at home just getting further behind. We've actually gotten thank you notes from school counselors about opening this program. We've, we have another initiative that we have is, is just to better community partnerships, because we know we can do things more cost-effectively if we partner. So one of the things has been, we now have rotations with the Smoky Hill Residency Program, that they can do a behavioral health rotation with us. And in July, we are getting our first family practitioner doctor to join us. We also have added a onsite, full-time psychiatrist, who's wonderful. And then we, with the School of Nursing, with K-Dub and KU and Kansas, and K-State, we have, we are now doing nursing rotations as well for behavioral health. So we hope to strengthen our primary care folks beyond what we do out into the community to make sure that those issues are getting adequately addressed. Training is a big part of quality. Most of our, our best practices have a foundation of a best practice called motivational interviewing. It's very person-centered. It's very, it works on engagement with where they're at and helps them to move kind of through ambivalence to, to make that decision to go ahead and make the changes they need to make to get healthy. We've also added the Columbia Suicide Watch, because we're all about measurement and data and data-driven decisions and being able to better protect and keep people safe. So the Columbia Suicide Rating Scale is an evidence-based practice nationally used, and we've adopted that as well. And now we, we have a way to kind of talk about progress and examine progress that we're doing and what's working and what's not. So how do our clients feel about us? Client satisfaction was one of our goals this year as well. And we surveyed consumers and we had a 99% rate of, that was favorable. We, we wanted to look at telemedicine in general, in, by itself, because telemedicine has a lot of questions around it and a lot of concerns. And, and in a time where there's such a national shortage, we wanted to make sure that we had the, that it's working. But it does allow us to bring in access to medication services when we cannot find because of the shortage of psychiatrists in, in the nation and certainly in our state. Telemedicine clients, 94% were very happy with their, with their telemedicine experience. That was very good news for us and for the community that, that that does work in, in the behavioral health field. 96% would, would recommend us to a family member. Other things we did, we added gene site testing, which is a way to, to a quick swab to see what class of medication you're going to, you're going to have, your body chemistry is going to tolerate better. That is something that helps us to find that behavioral health medication and get it to a therapeutic level faster. We also implemented, we, we got a large grant that supported us in replacing our financial software. Now we have the ability to build and track budgets and work more efficiently and make better data-driven decisions. We made some upgrades to our facility. One safety had, has become a huge issue in the way our setup was. And so we've made some strides. We're not all the way there, but we made some strides in safety for clients and for staff. We had to accommodate growth. We ran out of room, but we felt like we could better utilize our space. And so we have done some remodeling that has met the demand for the extra space that we needed. Although I will say that there's not much more we can do from there. We're pretty tight. And any expansion from here, we're going to need to look at a new solution. Okay, so you go to our stats page, and you see that we served more folks than last year. About a 4% increase overall. But to me, the, the bottom right-hand corner talks about new clients, our new admissions and what we're doing there. That's at 8% for adult. It's a 27% increase for kids. We're catching them earlier. We're identifying it earlier. We're getting it stabilized earlier. And we're working with the whole community to take care of all their needs at the same time. So I think long-term, that's going to have a huge impact on saving dollars, actually. The next page talks about what people are saying about us. And there are some, we have comment cards that are always available for anything a client wants to tell us. And these are some of the things that our clients are saying about us. The next page is what are our community partners saying about us? And this was very meaningful to me, to hear so much of, that, that the partnership's been exceptional, that they have really appreciated our staff, that we're making a difference. You know, if our community partners are identifying that, we're not only being nice or courteous, we are actually making a difference, that they feel it's, it's valuable time for them to take the time to spend with us in that partnership. So I think that says a lot. How are we doing financially? So here, you can see our expenses and our revenue. We manage our budget very carefully. We have, we use very conservative spending practices. And I have a staff that, that is expert at managing on a string budget. Any extra that we have, we're trying to build up our reserves to an adequate level right now. And we are also reinvesting anything, because we're a 501(c)(3), anything we get, we are reinvesting either in, in making sure we have adequate reserves for a rainy, bad day, or we are reinvesting in services like moving into schools, starting up a new program such as K-Prep, the kindergarten preparatory school. And this, this is what we, this is where our profits go. What makes us different as a licensed community mental health center? Being designated as a local mental health authority for Dickinson, Ellsworth, Lincoln, Ottawa, and Saline, we provide a lot of free services, a lot of trainings, a lot of free screenings. We help anyone who comes through our door regardless of their ability to pay. But we also want to be the preferred provider for anyone who can pay, because having that balance and that mix is what makes us more cost-effective. So we are not just the mental health safety net. We are, we, we are committed to being that preferred provider in town. We also, because we're licensed by the state, have a more comprehensive range of services to offer. We provide one-on-one support out in the community when it's needed, where they work, where they, where they go to school, where they, in their homes, in the community, to help them to reintegrate and be successful in independent, in, in living independently. We also, because of this, undergo lots and lots of audits. So we get checked all the time. We pass them with flying colors. We are consistently above the state average. And, and we, we, we get a lot of positive feedback from both state, the managed care companies, et cetera. The next page, page has a list of most of our services. Some of the, not all of them are on here. We kind of grouped some together because there's so many. But it gives you an idea of what, what those are. And finally, the last page talks about, these are ways that you can support us and that the, the folks can support us. And that is, and, and some of that's financial, but it doesn't have to be financial. So there's Dylan's Community Rewards and things like that, that you can participate in. So let's move in and talk, talk about our budget presentation. The state funding. So the state funding was cut significantly in the last two decades. At least two big ones. And last year, the legislature basically was faced with a lot of the negative consequences of that decision. And we have more support in the legislature than we ever have in terms of understanding the value of mental health. Last year, they restored much of our most recent cuts that happened during the Brownback administration. But even that is restoring us just to under our 2006 funding level. That's where we're at. Medicaid rates. So Medicaid rates are when we provide a service, this is the fee they pay us for that service. The issue with that is that most of the other commercial insurances set their rates off the Medicaid insurance. So this is a huge chunk of our ability to be sustainable on our own without county and state dollars. The Medicaid rates for behavioral health have not increased in over a decade since 2008. That's the reality that we live in every day. In those 11 years, a quick inflation calculation shows that there's been a 7% inflation increase. Costs, of course, have gone up. A psychiatry is our doctor who can prescribe behavioral health medication. An example of that is that a salary An example of that is that a salary for them, because there's such a shortage, has tripled. There's no way we can keep up with that. We lose at least, at least a half million dollars alone just by having medication. But the access and the importance to the outcomes is so important that we make sure that we are providing that, which is why we went towards telemedicine so that if we ever had someone resign, we have a backup right there so that they don't, so that we don't lose access in between because it takes about three years or more to find a psychiatrist, which we're very excited that we now have. And we've got two doctors, one coming and one that's here. The county funding. County funding is attached to the statutory mandate for the Mental Health Services Safety Net. In 2018, the cost for the uninsured and underinsured services was $1.8 million for us. You combine all the state and county funding all together and all our revenue together, we still have a shortfall of $281,000. The number of people seeking our help is growing. The number of insured with no ability to pay grew from 17% to 21%. The year before that, it grew from 14% to 17%. So, that's where we're at as well in, in terms of, we're adding about a 4% extra deficit to what we are delivering every year. So, the safety net has not kept up with the demand or with the cost of delivering services. And especially, the immediate threat is the rising labor wages. That if I can't, it, it, you know, the folks that, the, the population that we're dealing with, with our mental health specialists who are working in the community with kids who pull hair and bite and spit and, and are not, they're, they're not always fun to be around, but they, they have great relationships with us and we're able to help move them forward and help them with their behaviors. So, this, you compare that to what Walmart's paying to stock a shelf, there's no way we can keep filling our positions. So, we consider that we're in crisis mode at this point for trying, but with the rates the way they are, there's no way to increase the wages. What do we, so why are they a valuable service investment for Celine County? I just want you to know that, that the prongs that we work off of is we expect ourselves to achieve excellent outcomes. We use conservative spending practices and we provide continuous performance improvement to get the most out of every dollar. You've been getting a great return on your investment nationally. It, the statistics says that you're getting a $4 return on your investment. Given the, the above-average state ratings that we get, I would guess that's even better than that. What did we do for Celine County in 2018? So, just for Celine, Celine County, we served 22% increase in youth clients. We had an 11% increase in adult clients. We provided a 6% increase in services and a 7% increase in access to medication services, just in Celine. So, no waiting over a week for a medication appointment anymore. Some centers, our sister centers, are still at three months to six months wait. Youth Crisis Houses increased by 31%. We, we served 50 more families. We already talked about the, the school stats. To prevent a suicide, the cost is about $1,2.2 million according to the CDC for one suicide. And some of our therapists who have been placed in, in schools have identified kids who were not on anybody's radar at all, found out that they had a, they had an active suicide plan they were intending to, to, to execute and we've been able to catch those. I even have some unintended consequences. I have a building principal we work with and we were talking and he said, "It's changed the whole culture of our school. Mental health is being talked about up and down the halls. We hear the kids talking about it. They're even saying, 'Man, you really need to go see Derek. He'll help.'" That's our therapist who's onsite at one of the schools. We had, one of the building principals said, "Mental health is at the forefront of my mind now. I handle things differently. I never expected that. I went into the bathroom, there's a kid sitting on the floor." Normally, I would've said, "What are you doing? Get back to class." This time, I sat on the floor with him and, and asked him what was going on. He ended up needing to be psychiatrically hospitalized at that time. And, and this principal just beamed when he told me, "I know I saved a life that day." That's the, that's the effect and that's the community response that we're trying to get out. So, far more than the services we provide. Our budget perspective. We, for, for other trainings and classes, we provided class, we affected 5,275 participants, 197 community trainings just for Celine County. Celine County gets about 76% of the services that we deliver end up going to Celine County residents. So, as you can see, your funding for us is absolutely critical. So, the budget perspective is that we aren't keeping up with costs and without adequate funding, we're not gonna be able to sustain the great return on investment that you currently receive. The immediate threat, again, is the competitive wages. And we play a vital role in defraying costs to many county budget areas. If you look at law enforcement, ER, jail, juvenile delinquency, suicide and preventable deaths, truancy, employment, job productivity, absenteeism, ability to live independently, homelessness, and hospitalization, just to name a few of the biggies. So, our proposal this year, since you contribute $5.2 per capita, we look at per capita because that puts us to apples and apples when you look at it across the state and what other community mental health centers are receiving from their counties. The average is 7.5. So, $7.50 is what the per capita is of what, the average of what counties are providing to their community mental health center. You're at 5.2. But if you go back to the, the grid, the table, you can see the last four years, you all have certainly valued what we're doing and have attempted to give us increases as you could. Prior to four years ago, you can see where there were cuts and then just stayed the same. And so, we're trying to, there's a little ground to be made up, but we do appreciate very much what you've done for us. So, for our request, we're looking at a minimum, we really feel that a minimum of 3% to keep, to keep doing what we're doing. But with the rising labor wages and things, we really need to gain a little ground. So, I put on there, there's a 3% request and a 5% so that you can see the, what the difference would be. And other than that, I just thank you for your consideration of us in your budget planning. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. I've got a couple of questions for you. On your board of directors and, and you're representing five counties, are, is every county represented on your board?
Yes, they are.
Also, I, I assume that you accept insurance?
Oh, yes.
Health insurance?
Mm-hmm.
Also, from a, from a state perspective, do you request time with our state legislators? Do they?
Yes, actually, I have been less present here the last couple of years because I've been spending a lot of time in Topeka.
Okay, well, those are all necessary things. Seemed like I had one other question, but I don't.
Do you find them more receptive this year?
Absolutely. Absolutely. Both the House and the Senate have a certain amount of increase in both bills. So, we don't know how that'll play out, but we, we recognize that they recognize the value in both houses. So, that's a good sign.
Well, there's no question that, that your agency is making the difference. I think all five of us recognize that and I hope the, the majority of the community recognizes it also. I mean, it's in, the proof's in the pudding in the numbers and it's, it's, it's a wonderful job that you and your staff are providing for the community. I, I certainly commend you for that. So, other questions, comments from?
One question, Kathy. The, the average county funding at 750.
Yes.
Where can we find that data?
Uh, each.
To know how other counties are funding.
I have a list. Our, so we're connected with our sister centers and we have, as an association, and we have someone who puts that together for us, what every county's receiving. So, I have that, I can, I can probably provide that for you.
I appreciate that.
Sure.
Yeah, I, I think that is an interesting question because, you know, are, are we way behind Johnson County or are we way ahead of, say, Logan County or one of the western counties? Or are they the ones that are ahead of us? They don't have these agencies like we've got here. So, that would be an interesting number. But obviously, as you have stated, we're under budget crunch here in Celine County ourselves. We've got a lot on the plate for next year. I, I know that when we consider appropriations, you're at the top of the list. And we will do everything that, I'm confident that my fellow commissioners agree with me on this, that we will do everything we can to, to be able to accommodate your requests.
Thank you very much.
So, thank you for your time and, and.
Can I ask a quick question?
Very comprehensive report, so go ahead.
If somebody is suicidal and they come in to see you, do they have the option of staying there or do you send them to another facility?
So, currently, if you're a youth, we have the Martin Youth Center that we can divert there and we did that first because there was no inpatient for youth and they were having.
That's within the last couple of years, isn't that right?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and that would take them completely out of their community. We just received a grant from KEDU's at the state Department of Aging and Developmental Disability. They, we are now written in, and we just got written into statute by the legislature last year as one of three crisis centers for, for the state. So, one is the old rainbow that is in Kansas City, one is in Topeka, and we are now the third because they wanted one on the western Kansas side and, and chose us, or asked us to do that. That, that is directed by legislature for funding. However, KEDU's has had trouble coming through with that funding. We have received some. It's, it's been late. And the project that we have is, involves community partners, so CKF and Emergency Room and Law Enforcement. And because of that, it has made our community partners a little weary until we get the funding straightened out. So, I'm also working in Topeka on, and coming up, coming up with the funds that go along with that legislation. And the new administration is, is taking that seriously and is working on kind of rectifying that situation. What that's going to do for, for us is allow us to open adult crisis beds to do kind of the same thing.
And that's, I guess that was my point because my experience with it is that with a friend is very helpful at your place and then, and when they went to another facility, not so good. And just, just FYI and so, yeah, I would be.
To stay. So, what we've done in the meantime, because we did get one lump sum from KEDU's, we, part of our remodel and updated safety, we took a room with a shower and nearby a kitchen and washer and dryer. And we do have what we call a 23-hour crisis observation now where they can come and we can stay. A lot of times, the issues may be basic needs need to be met and that's what's causing the crisis. And so, if we can just work with them a little bit, we work very closely with housing and, and, and trying to get those basic needs met. And then sometimes that, that alleviates the mental health crisis.
Great, thank you.
Kathy, could you briefly address the partnership, your partnership with the Celine County Jail and?
Yes.
And the pilot project?
Yes. So, this is your updated report for the jail. The bottom line is that from what we have worked out with the jail, and this started in 2015, we believe this year, we saved $256,000 to the bottom line of the jail. We started out with two goals. One was to reduce recidivism. And at that time, Sheriff Kokonowski was, was, was in charge and they had determined that keeping someone out of jail, their high recidivism rate, if we target those folks, keeping them out of jail 90 days or longer for their highest recidivism, or their, their highest utilizers would be a huge success even if we just did it for one person. And so, you can see, we've had a 66% success rate with the very little services that we provide and, and the costs associated that the jail comes up with for the savings on that. The second one was reducing the need for intensive suicide watch or, or isolation and, and the, the extra dollars that, that takes. The average that they were in there when they got put into a suicide watch was 18.5 days before we started. Now, we intervene with those folks when they get in there. And for the last three years, we have, they've been in there for an average of two days and then able to go back to general population. Then they added, then they decided, "Hey, we want to add a third one. This is going so well." And I said, "Really?" So, they said that anytime they have to enter general population because of a disturbance, a distraction, a fight, anything, that that ups their costs immensely, their liability, their injury, safety. And then they call them, I think, behavioral write-ups for every inmate that, that involves. So, the understanding was that they want, the, the folks who are getting, who are having the most behavioral write-ups, they wanted us to target those. So, my staff have intervened with the ones that they ask us to intervene with. And on those folks, it has brought down the number of disruptions in the general population to a point that we're at about, our first year, we had a huge impact, but they've, I think they've had less, less of those now and we're at a 57% this year. We really don't have a way to calculate costs associated with not having to enter general population and the cost to injury and, and, and the liability that goes along with that. So, we really don't have a cost associated with that, but that's just been an extra goal. The one thing we do have or that we do know is that when they, when they do have to enter general population, it's extra paperwork for that behavioral write-up, something they're not able to get, this is my understanding, they're not able to get that job done during their shift. So, it ends up in overtime. And that's what we've reduced is that overtime.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Wow.
Mr. Chairman, I have a few questions. Go ahead, Mike.
Thank you. You can get a plug in. You have a chambers after hour coming up next month?
Yes, May 9th. Thank you. We're having an open house for the chamber and to come and see and learn about our facility. Just know that we're here when you need us.
Tours and appetizers.
That's right. Thank you, Mike.
One question, Kathy. Do you bill the sheriff's office for any of the services?
They do. It's, this year, it was $4,000 approximately. We, we only bill cost, by the way.
Don't have the numbers in front of me, so forgive me. I'm working on notes here. The 1.8 million you referred to as uninsured and underinsured, is that the billed services number or is that the anticipated reimbursement rate?
That is the, I believe that is the cost of services delivered.
Okay. The telemedicine you referred to, do you know, are you seeing a growth in that or where, where are these people coming from? Is it mostly in Celine County or is it, is it reaching out to the, to the people that can't get here? Do you know that answer?
So, currently, our telemed providers, we had a psychiatrist retire and couldn't replace them for a year. And that's when we said, "We've got, we've got to do better than this." That's when we brought in telemedicine. And since then, we've expanded it and, and then we were able to recruit and find psychiatrists. And so, we're building back up the onsite, but we're keeping telemedicine because it's a great backup to make sure that you're, you're, you always have something and it's a bigger pool to draw from. It is currently in Celine County, but our plans are to take it out to every county and offer it there so they don't have to, that's the one service they have to drive into Celine County to, to have provided. Abilene, for example, we rent space from the Abilene Memorial Hospital and they are building us more offices and a telemed office so that we can start offering it out there. And then we have already had discussions with Ellsworth and Lincoln.
One more. When, when you talked about the Medicaid hasn't increased in the past decade and the state funding hasn't, hasn't followed suit either since 2006, everybody knows there's inflation. I agree with you on the 7%. It might be even, might be even a little low in the past decade, but have you offered less services to able to balance the books? Because I know you, you still, I think I heard you still realize a profit, kind of move that profit back into the, to, to capital campaigns. But how, have you been able to balance? balance that?
You know, I came to Salina six years ago, and I quickly realized that we have a really special staff at Central Kansas Mental Health Center who has always had a very conservative culture of spending practices, and I rely on that every day. In addition to that, we have now worked on getting smarter and, and, and we've been able to renegotiate contracts, we've been able to partner with communities to keep our expenses down, to continue to offer good things for the community. So far, we've been able to do that, but it's been at the expense of not, not being able to put what we need to put into our reserves to, to maintain the adequate reserves. But we're making it, and we make sure that we make it. What we could do, what, what that does do, though, is, is it, you get to a point where you, you're as efficient as you can get, and there's not a lot of other places to go, and I'm over, I start overworking my staff and losing them because we don't have enough of the administrative support to keep things moving. And so that's kind of where we are. We have one of the lowest you can see on the, on the grid on the annual report, like a 9% on the operating costs, and I think the, the average is about 11 to 12%. So if anything, I'm probably a little under where I should be, and I see that. I see, I see the burnout, and I, I am worried about that.
Thank you. All right, well, again, thank you very much. Job well done.
Thank you.
We'll move on to item number seven.
National County Government Month proclamation with Andrew Manley, County Administrator.
Andrew?
This proclamation is to recognize April 2019 as National County Government Month titled Connecting the Unconnected. Whereas the nation's 3,069 counties serving more than 300 million Americans provide essential services to create healthy, safe, and vibrant communities. And whereas counties provide health services, administer justice, keep communities safe, foster economic opportunities, and much more. And whereas Celine County and all counties take pride in our responsibility to protect and enhance the health, welfare, and safety of our residents in efficient and cost-effective ways. And whereas, through National Association of Counties President Greg Cox's Connecting the Unconnected initiative, NACO is demonstrating how counties deliver people-centered services to our residents nationwide. And whereas each year since 1991, the National Association of Counties has encouraged counties across the country to actively elevate awareness of county responsibilities, programs, and services. And now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Celine County Commissioners do hereby proclaim April 2019 as National County Government Month and encourage all county officials, employees, schools, and residents to participate in county government celebration activities. I made a few notes. I sent an email to all county staff to understand some of these activities that we do. A lot of our county departments will put out displays, brochures, et cetera, that people can enjoy in the Cine County Building. Rodent Bridge will also be taking a truck, loader, and motor grader to Heartland Schools for Big Truck Night on April 25th. The Health Department, in conjunction with National Public Health Week, will be posting additional items on social media. And as Rosie said, with the Senior Center, they're hosting a volunteer appreciation dinner April 26th, working with USD 305 that encourages high school students to interact with seniors. And also the Kansas Western Girls Basketball and Men's Football Teams are assisting in senior services dining room for community service hours.
Sounds like you've covered the bases. Further questions or comments from the commissioners? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move we proclaim April 2019 as National County Government Month.
Second motion. It's been moved in second that we proclaim April 2019 a National County Government Month. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Same sign. Motion does carry unanimously. Is there any other business to come before the commission or announcements that anyone wishes to make? Hearing none, I will take a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second?
Been moved in second that we adjourn today's meeting. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We're adjourned. There will be a meeting number two after a short pause, so anyone wishes to?